All right, now we're going to call the meeting to order. Roll call of attendance?
Done.
Thank you.
Have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Moved by Kevin, seconded by Stacy. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Julie, seconded by Stacy. And the discussion.
I'd like to comment that we are accepting $10,000 plus that has been donated to the school district from members of our community and the committees that we have in our schools, and we're extremely grateful for that. These funds will be used according to the wishes of the donors and to further the mission of the school. We're very grateful to everybody who's contributed. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have some presentations and recognitions, starting with the Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching. Scott Brisky is going to present with Helen Eddinger.
Good evening, Superintendent Dufferin, members of the school board, my teaching colleagues, thank you, and well, to our community as well. As one of the peer coaches in the district, I have the privilege of working closely with our teachers, who consistently strive to be the very best they can be for all of our students. Every day, another teacher impresses me with their skills, their love for their students, their perseverance, and their commitment to this complex and rewarding profession. Our district is very, very fortunate to have such skilled professionals in our classrooms, and high honors for everyone are really deserved.
The Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching are the highest honors bestowed by the United States government specifically for K-12 teachers. Up to 108 exemplary teachers are recognized each year. To receive this award, a teacher must be nominated, then go through a rigorous application process where they are evaluated by a national selection committee of prominent mathematicians, education researchers, district-level personnel, and classroom teachers. Applicants are evaluated using five dimensions of outstanding teaching: mastery of content, use of effective instructional methods and strategies, effective use of student assessments, reflective practices, and lifelong learning to improve student and student -- to improve teaching and student learning, leadership in education inside and outside the classroom.
So on October 15th this year, the White House announced the most recent winners of this prestigious award, and our very own Patricia Trish Hauck, a second-grade teacher at Wildwood, was announced as a recipient in the area of mathematics.
Trish has taught for 30 years at Wildwood Elementary, where she continues to strive for excellence and equitable experiences for every student.
And Trish received this paid trip to Washington DC, where she attended a series of recognition events and professional development opportunities, and we're incredibly proud of her, and so I'd like to join, have you join me in congratulating her on this outstanding
Thank you, and thanks for recognizing it, and as Helen said, the difference between me and the rest of the members is that I did the paperwork. We do have really strong, dedicated teachers in our district. So a little bit about the journey to Washington DC and back. It started about a year and a half ago, when Donna Forbes nominated me. Donna, and Helen, and Stacy Fesser were amazing colleagues to offer their support all the way through. I submitted my application in May of 2018, and the main topics of my application were on equity in the math classroom, and really working to make sure every voice is included in a math classroom, especially the voices of the under-participators, the kids that for some reason are not loving math, and everybody should love math, for sure, at a first and second grade level. I wanted my students to think mathematically and not necessarily do math. So my application was submitted, I waited a little while, and was named a state finalist in July of last year, and then waited and waited and waited some more until July of this past summer. I got an email asking for release to do a full FBI background check.[314.12][314.12][laughter] And I was pretty sure it was for this award, not anything else, pretty sure. But that also comes with lots of emails warning that you cannot tell anybody that you are being considered, and that you are only being considered, and it can be rescinded at any time if you tell anybody other than your immediate family. So lots of, well, they weren't really threats, but they kind of felt like that.[338.28][338.28][laughter] And then I waited and waited some more. And then at 3:15 on the last Friday in September, I happened to check my email, and there was announcements saying that I was to receive the award, but I had until, that was Friday at 3:15. Tuesday at noon, I had to have flight arrangements made through the government and hotel accommodations. So that started our journey. It was lots of fun. It was the most intense two-and-a-half days of professional development that I've ever had the experience to do, so I encourage everyone to go for it and try for it. The gist of our professional development was working, the award is awarded through the National Science Foundation, and there was a large panel of national-level experts. For example, Nafisa Owens is a senior advisor for the National Science Foundation, Dr. Kelvin Drogomire, who is the Director of Science and Technology Policy for the White House and reports directly to the President, were there talking to teachers, listening to teachers, asking for feedback on the government's strategies for technology in the coming years. And first, they spoke, and then they put the teachers into small groups, and the teachers talked about how it was being used in each of our districts, and then asked for feedback. And never have I been in a room where teachers could stand up and really say what they were thinking, really give feedback on this, and national-level experts were really listening to teachers. And the number-one recurring theme that kept coming out is that this is great, technology, STEM, math, those are all super-important, and are not ever going to be going away in our global society, but what are we doing to make sure not only that we are teaching kids to go into engineering fields, but to go into the field of technology education? And what are we going to do about the teacher shortage on a national level? And it might not be quite here yet in Minnesota, but it is happening across the country. And that comment was heard over and over. How are we going to motivate people to go into teaching? How are we going to retain teachers, especially in the STEM education field, but across all of the areas? So it was great to hear those national experts really here and listen to those concerns about the teacher shortage coming up. It was fun to talk to teachers from all over the country, and the other highlight for me would probably be that they hosted all of us and our guests at the Kennedy Center
So our next presentation recognition is for Teacher of the Year. Our presenter is Paul Christensen.
Good evening. I'm Paul Christensen, high school English teacher, also co-chair of the Modestia Education Association Teacher of the Year Committee. Each year, the committee convenes in May to select one of our MEA members to represent us. We discuss the people who've been nominated and have completed the application process in search of somebody who has demonstrated both continued success in the classroom and steadfast advocacy for students and public education overall. I'm very pleased to announce that this year, the committee chose Ann Gary, high school Spanish teacher. A 1988 graduate of Modestia High School, Ann is in her 26th year of teaching, 15 of which have been here at Modestia. During this time, she has proven herself to be both an excellent educator and an articulate advocate for students and education. She knows her students, listens to them, helps them reach their potentials. She knows her fellow teachers, makes time for them, and helps them work through their professional challenges. By looking after the well-being of everyone, both students and staff, Ann makes Modestia High School a better place. Please join me in welcoming the 2019-2020 Teacher of the Year, Ann Gary.[666.01][666.01][applause]
Thank you for the recognition. It's not my favorite thing, you guys know that about me. I want to thank all the teachers that are here tonight and the pair of professionals. I'm really not here to, because I'm being recognized, I, this is perfect, because I can recognize you all here. You deserve it. I would like to thank you for your incredible and tireless work and all the things, extraordinary things, that you all do for kids. You are true testaments to excellence in our profession and deserve the admiration of every single person in this room and beyond. I admire that you continue to do and fight for what's right for kids. We became educators for many reasons, but for many of us, we wanted to make a difference in the lives of children and to put into practice our knowledge, our passion, and our compassion. As teachers, we long for the opportunity to explore our passions and to reach each child. We also are too well-aware of the many challenges that face us every day and the stress that bogs us down and pushes us to consider if it's all worth it. For me, I try very hard to keep my head up. I try not to lose sight of what can be, because I really truly believe things can be. I dream of a society that fights for public education, not against it. A society that fully funds schools so that each student, whether you live in Modestia or Monomedia, has access to a quality education. I dream of innovation without fear and the time to collaborate with purpose. I wait for the day when preschool teachers and adult educators, who are licensed professionals just as I am, are considered teachers by Minnesota school boards and legislators.[797.23][797.23][applause] And finally, I dream and fight for schools where every staff member, child, person who enters that building feels safe, valued, and loved. These are all things that can happen. Thank you again for the, it's an honor to represent Modestia and for supporting me and each other as we forge ahead, doing the very best that we can do every day.
And our last recognition tonight is the Parent Teacher Association.
Hi, I'm Liz Pelvier, and it's my privilege to be here tonight on behalf of the PTO to honor four of our outstanding volunteers: Kate Crampy, Amanda Morris, Kelly Whitman, and Sarah Hackworthy. These four women have devoted many hours of their time since the start of the school year to support the PTO in its mission of fundraising, enriching programming, and supporting our teachers and staff. Specifically, between the four of them and the three committees they chair, they have put more than $35,000 back into our schools just since September, either in the form of fundraising or staff support efforts. And fewer than 13% of the PTOs and PTAs in the whole country are able to raise that much in a whole year. Our community is unique in the level of talent and skills we have amongst our parents. If you need a house built, or a car fixed, or a website, or event management, we have someone for that. And when parents pour those talents and skills into the school community, everyone benefits. And our four volunteers tonight are the perfect example of that. I'd like to tell you a little more specifically about what each of these women has done this year. Kate Crampy chaired the Fund Run Committee this fall, and when I say she chaired it, I mean she's single-handedly planned and managed our biggest fundraising event of the year. She secured sponsors within the local business community, she handled all the logistics at two schools with administration, staff, she ordered and distributed T-shirts for more than 1,000 people, which I can tell you personally is very difficult. She organized all the parent volunteers to staff the events, and she did this not once, but twice at both Wildwood and OH Anderson. Amanda Morris chairs the PTO Hospitality Committee, and what that means is she and her committee of nine parent volunteers do the work to express the gratitude we all feel as parents to the exceptional teachers and staff we have in this district. Amanda plans 10 events per school year to thank the teachers and staff at both Wildwood and OH for their work, including apples and cookies on curriculum night, special deliveries the week of homecoming, buffet dinners during conferences, teacher appreciation breakfasts, and treats before the holidays and the end of the school year. And I can say overwhelmingly, the most feedback I hear from our teachers about our PTO is how much they appreciate those dinners during long conferences.[1045.83][1045.83][laughter] And Kelly Whitman and Sarah Hackworthy co-chaired the OH Anderson Book Fair Committee this fall. The book fair happens every year during fall conferences at OH, and it's very popular among students, but planning and executing it are not for the faint of heart. There are many logistics between scholastic in the school, organizing volunteers to staff it for a whole week, managing inventory, handling money, and organizing a student fundraiser. But Kelly and Sarah are a dynamic duo and more than handled it. In fact, under their leadership, the student fundraiser was the most successful it's ever been. OH students raised more than $3,000 in spare change to benefit their own school and other schools where perhaps books are not as available. Imagine how heavy $3,000 in spare change is.[1102.14][1102.14][laughter] Kelly and Sarah lugged that change out of the school, into their vehicles, in and out of their houses, and finally to the bank. So on behalf of the PTO, the district, and all of the students who benefit from your work, I thank the four of you for all of your energy and commitment, and the PTO would not run without you.
I'm happy to help.
Thank you.
It's funny. First before you get the picture.[1156.14][1156.14][laughter] Oops, sorry. Thank you. Thank you. We're happy to help. We're all called. All called. Sorry. They're taking me. They're taking me. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you. We're happy to help. We're all called. All called. Sorry. They're taking me. They're taking me. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you. We're happy to help. We're all called. We're all called. 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 All right.
After some great recognitions, we have our first presentation, Community Education Update from Dr. Kathy Weyland.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent Board Members. I'm Kathy Weyland, Director of Modestia Community Ed, and I'm here to provide an annual update to the board. The update's going to cover the annual report, the audit, new DHS requirements, the preschool playground, and working with the community. Each fall, Community Ed is required to submit a report to the Minnesota Department of Ed. This fall, it says we served over 11,000 residents or community members birth to senior, and we work with 55 groups using facilities, and we estimate that brought in over 15,000 visitors to the district. Last month, you heard from the auditor mostly about the general fund, and this slide highlights Fund Four. When you consider it with all district funds, Community Ed expenses are 5.5% of the budget. The Community Ed budget is just over $2 million, and there's three fund balances. Kind of our general fund balance is, was reduced by $80,000 this past year, and it's over 500, still over $500,000. School readiness has a negative fund balance that we're working on, and early childhood has a fund balance that's almost $200,000. We also support the general fund with about 18% of our budget. Because of federal legislation, there's new Minnesota Department of Human Service rules that childcare providers have to comply with, and that includes Modestia Adventure Club, which is our school-age care program. We had to go through a certification process. We're certified a year ago, and in addition to lots of paperwork and monitoring, there's various new requirements. And one of those, we're working on right now with our HR department, is a rigorous background check that includes fingerprinting. Preschool program, we have a new playground over at Wildwood. The playground was installed, I think, two days before school started, so we just made it. It meets the needs of our preschool population, which has doubled since Wildwood was built, and this will allow the hill to heal, that the kids all played on one hill. The playground was funded by Community Ed and costs about $80,000. That's a picture of it before the equipment was installed. And there's with the equipment installed. Kind of looks tiny to me now.[1413.01][1413.01][laughter] Here's a couple kids playing. We also installed a couple diggers, and that's mushroom obstacle course, which they love. And here's another view of the playground and the giant ant that they like to feed wood chips to. And I did ask a little preschooler how they liked the new playground, and they said it was fine.[1437.21][1437.21][laughter] But then I realized they weren't there last year to know there wasn't one, so...[1442.13][1442.13][laughter] Part of Community Ed's charge is to work with the community, that's part of our name. We're hosting the Wildwood Library here while it's being rebuilt, so that's out in the hallway. We helped host the farmer's market, pumpkin mania, even though it rained, they had great pumpkin sales. We received a contribution from the Legion, and that helps us with our middle-school athletics and producing our scoop, which is a brochure for adults and seniors. We're continuing our many stories collaborative, and that's with Century College, White Bear Schools, White Bear Center for the Arts, and others. Youth basketball helped us purchase manual high-digestible backboards at the middle school. We held an Empower Me event with over 200 attendees, and it was on children's safety. We coordinate with outside groups like the Legion for Veterans Day and Meet Santa, and this room held about 140, had about 140 families visiting on Sunday to meet Santa Claus. The Tree of Light and Remembrances with the Food Shelf and other groups. The Quilters Country Fairs every other year, that brought about 500 people to this building. The outdoor skating party in the rinks, Rite of Spring, and then we work with a lot of community members on facility use. And with that, I will entertain questions.
Questions or comments? Stacy?
So, thank you. You always have a great presentation, because you always have a great story to tell and all the good work you're doing, so thank you for that. I just want to see if I have this right. So you said you serve over 11,000 people in our community, and our population for Modestia District is 15,000. Is that correct?
Correct.
So that's a very large percentage of our community getting...
Well, I mean, aren't all our community, because...
That's true, but if you look at...
A lot of them.
But let's just, let's just enjoy that moment.[1566.63][1566.63][laughter] I think that's something to really be proud of, the number of people she reaches, given the size of our community.
Yeah, I think it's miraculous what you're able to get done with small staff, and everybody's so pleasant and outgoing, and a little plug for the community luncheon. A few board members have started to come, I've been going to the office here, it's been great, and I sneak down and have lunch, and it's a wonderful thing. But sitting at different tables with different people that attend this lunch, a number of times I've been at tables, and I usually start with, "Well, where do you live?" And on the one occasion, I've had a group tell me that they're from White Bear, "But we really like your community lunch."[1617.74][1617.74][laughter] Probably from the other side of the pot, so that's great. So, thanks for all the work you did.
I've been telling them, "Come on across, it's not that far. I gotta just pay the fee."
The variety of programming is just unbelievable, and your cookies are amazing. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Mike, go ahead.
We turned a book here during the quilter convention.
Oh, Lord.[1647.69][1647.69][laughter]
It was really cool.[1650.01][1650.01][laughter] I took a look in there, and ladies all brought me, "Hey, come take a look at the quilts" and stuff, and wow. It was pretty, yeah. So I just want to say that is...
All right. Claire's not able to be with us tonight, so we do not have a student representative report this month. Next, we're going to discuss the board member calendar, which is in your packet for January, February. Are there any items on the calendar for January, February, board members like to call out? Do you want to call it out?
Yes, but I'm going to have to think about this. I'm not sure of the date, so I'll come back on the 9/16 report and cover something.
Oh. Okay. All right. Next, we have the 2019-2020 Revised Budget. Bill Minazzi.
Thank you for the opportunity to present the current year revised budget for discussion this evening. Similar to prior years, and just by way of setting this up, our fiscal year runs from July to June. The school board is required by statute to approve the preliminary budget for the fiscal year by June 30th. We did this last year in June. And similar to prior years, we're about halfway through the fiscal year now in bringing some revised budget recommendations to you, albeit in a discussion forum tonight. The assumptions and estimates from the preliminary budget that was approved in June are really from March and April, and so we're a ways past that now, and so that's really the reason for the revision. The document that you have on the screen in your board packet is a general fund only. I should note that there are very few changes this year, which is what you would hope for, and the changes that you do see are positive, largely stemming from the 2019 legislative session specifically around special education revenue. So we'll just go through the board packet, or go through the document. A lot of this is fairly repetitive. A lot of this is fairly repetitive, things that you've seen in prior years, so I'll skip over some pages. First one, district officials. We all know who we are, and so I will skip over that page to start. I do have our belief statements and our mission from our 2019 strategic planning work, and I do include this in every budget document that you see. Obviously, as I've said in the past, this guides the budget dollars in the general fund, so it's important to me to have this as a part of a budget document that you would see. Revised Budget Overview. So, as I mentioned, the budget here includes an analysis of the actual financial condition as of June 30, 2019. So Jim Ickdom from MMKR was here last month to present the audit report, so included in this comparison is the final audited numbers for 1819 and a comparison between the preliminary and revised estimate positions at June 30, 2020. And I do have that the revised budget includes, as we know, a 2% increase from the state from the 2019 legislative session, 2% in each year of the biennium, and then budget projections related to the legislative session for both the Special Education Cross Subsidy Reduction Aid, as well as the Special Education Cap adjustments were used in the revised budget estimates. You'll recall that the Special Education Cross Subsidy Reduction Aid ensures that the cross subsidy, that is to say, general fund dollars used to fund special education costs, did not grow year over year, ensuring that that 2% that we received from the state was a true 2%. And then just a note about our budget process. Again, you have seen this before, but our fiscal year starts with the property tax levy. That'll be the next agenda item for fiscal year 2021. We then look at the preliminary budget, which the board did last year in June, revised budget, which we're looking at as a discussion item tonight, and then finally, the audited financial report and fiscal audit that the school board usually receives in November following the end of the fiscal year. So looking at the revised budget in the general fund, so you'll see that the general fund revenue, so the comparison is the prior year revised budget, prior year actual amounts, current year preliminary budget, and then current year revised budget, and then the difference between the current year revised and preliminary budget. So you can see last year, as you may recall, the revised budget had a deficit of about $740,000. Actual was better than that, better than budget, which is a good thing. This year's preliminary budget was a small surplus of about $97,000, and we're revising that surplus upwards in the general fund to about $295,000. And I'll go over the main drivers of the increase in revenue and the increase in expenditures from the preliminary budget to the revised budget in the coming pages. The fund balance page that the board has seen before. So I mentioned the revised budget has a projected surplus of $295,000. It is important to note, however, that all of that $295,000 is not included in the unassigned fund balance. Okay, so up here, the unassigned portion of the surplus is approximately $250,000. So you can see that as we look at the fund balance policy of 8%, we did start the year with about a 4.1% or 4.2%, any variances from the 4.1%, 4.2% is just rounding. 4.1% at the beginning of the year, and we're projected to increase our financial position to about 4.6% or 4.7% at the end of the year. So that's taking the fund balance here, adding the $250,000 to get to the estimated position as of June 30, 2020. And then, as you know, we also have assigned accounts for the items that you see here, and then three restricted areas as well. The capital projects levy, or what's commonly referred to as the tech levy, operating capital, and then our LTFM, which stands for Long-Term Facilities Maintenance. So our total general fund projected surplus is $295,000 in the revised budget. Finally, the narrative piece. So this ties back and forth between the budgets from before, and just provides a brief explanation of some of the larger changes. So as I mentioned, the general fund revenue changed largely because of the state's special education aid. So you'll recall the 2019 legislature established a subsidy reduction aid to address the growing amount of the general fund revenue used to fund special education costs, as I mentioned. The special education growth cap was adjusted for fiscal year 2020 and then eliminated for fiscal year 2021. You'll remember that from the last session. So the end result of that led to additional special education revenue for our school district, which is reflected in the revised budget that you have in front of you, and was not fully reflected in the preliminary budget because it was so new related to the legislative session. And then enrollment. So our enrollment is consistent with the preliminary estimates and did not require updating, so you'll see that on the enrollment page on the next slide. And then finally, on the expenditure side, we've updated the estimates regarding contractual obligations, and then the preliminary budget, as similar to prior year, always uses a snapshot in time for staffing, and the revised uses the staffing changes from the fall. So there's always changes between the two, the preliminary budget and the revised budget. You're building the preliminary budget before the prior year fiscal year ends. Enrollment. So we are unique, as we all know, that our school district generally enrolls about 190 kindergarten students and graduates approximately 300 graduating seniors 13 years later. So monitoring enrollment and grade progression ratios is an important part of balancing the budget. You can see here our enrollment history for the previous four years, the preliminary estimates for 2019-20, and then the revised estimates. And as I mentioned, we are tracking reasonably close with our enrollment target here, and so the revenue assumptions that you see in the revised budget are based on 3,270 students, K-12, excluding PSEO and early childhood special education students for this calculation. Unpacking the general fund just a little bit more, looking at the numbers a different way. You can see that under the revenue side, the increase in levy revenue from 8.3 million to 9.4 million, and now revised down slightly, that reflects the 2018 operating levy. So the 2018 operating levy that passed was taxes payable in calendar year 2019, and the first year of the first tier of the operating levy dollars came in this year, which is the cause for the increase year over year. And really, the other increase here is in state special, is in state aid related to special education aid that we talked on the previous page. And then really, the only increases on the expenditure side are related to, as I said, contractual obligation estimates, and then staffing changes year over year, adjusting to actual. A slide on the fund balance policy. Specifically, call your attention to this line here, which says the general fund, unassigned fund balance as of June 30, 2019 was 4.2%. Projected to increase our financial position to about 4.7% as of June 30, 2020. And then just a graph to show the precipitous drop-off of our unassigned fund balance over the last few years. We have since stabilized, and hopefully, in the coming years, that projection will continue to increase. Expenditures by program in the general fund. Again, just another way of looking at the expenditures, and really, the reason I show this graph is to show the bottom. General fund uses by program, student-based needs. You can see that student-based needs accounts for approximately 85 cents on the dollars spent in the general fund. And you can see administration and district support services, 7.6%. Fiscal and other fixed costs, which is really our property and workers' compensation insurance, is about half a percent. And then buildings and sites, which is our operating capital, long-term facilities maintenance. Capital projects levy in our custodial department is about 10% of the general fund budget. So you'll recall, possibly from the 2018 levy, that this number was about 83.5, so it's even gone up a little bit since then, our expenditures on student-based needs. Additional or expanded descriptions of expenditures by object and expenditures by program just included for additional information. And then finally, the summary page. So as you can see, our general fund preliminary budget included a projected surplus of about $97,000. Our revised budget, based off of revisions to revenue and expenditures in the general fund, is approximately, showing a surplus of approximately $295,000. As I mentioned, of that, about $250,000 is attributed to the general unassigned fund. And then regarding our fund balance, projected to grow to about 4.6% at June 30, 2020. That's really all that I have for this document. As I mentioned, it's just a discussion item tonight, action later on in the fiscal year. Last thing I'll mention, it takes obviously many hours of work to get this publication done, so thank you to my staff in the business office for their work on the document.
Any questions from board members?
I just have a comment.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank you for all the accurate information and how well you presented to us. It makes it easier for us to make well-informed decisions. Thank you.
Seeing other comments, we will go on into the action items on the agenda. And first, we have Bill Menasi with Truth and Taxation.
This is not going to be your most exciting action item you're going to have all year, okay? The Truth and Taxation meeting is fairly prescribed, meaning I have to say certain items in a certain order, and so I, as I've done in prior years, will probably read more of this than I typically do, so forgive me on that. This is our annual Truth and Taxation meeting. It's annual in December and included up on your screen and in your board packet. This relates to our operating levy, so, or not just our operating levy, our levy in general. So the preliminary levy was approved by the school board in September, so a few months ago, certified at the maximum amount. Our district taxpayers receive their estimated tax statements in the month of November, and then finally, tonight, your recommendation will be to certify a specific dollar amount tonight. And then related to district revenue, this is really the first stage, as you remember from the previous agenda item, to determining district revenue for fiscal year 2021. So you'll certify the levy tonight. That will be taxes payable for our taxpayers in calendar year 2020, and then district revenue in fiscal year 2021. So that's really the first step in creating the budget for next year, at least as it relates to levy revenue. Requirements of the Truth and Taxation hearing, this is where I mentioned it's fairly prescribed. Three main areas. So we're required to talk about the 2019 Pay 20 proposed property tax levy, the proposed change, and specific reasons for the proposed change. The second area is the current year budget, distribution of revenues by revenue source, and spending by program area, and then a time for public comment and questions as governed by Minnesota Statute 275.065. Starting first with the 2019 Pay 20020 levy information. Here you see a slide with the gross levy comparison for all funds, so you can see that the overall change is very small, less than 1%. The total increase is .82%, and you can see the increase per the general fund, community education fund, debt service fund, and then OPEB debt service fund. So OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, and the total increase, all funds, of about $120,000. .82% increase year over year. And in the coming slides, we will review each fund. Starting first with the general fund. So the total increase in the general fund is 1.43%. General fund, obviously, the largest operating fund in the district, so rather than review each one of these line items, I'll just review some of the larger movers. So you can see, first of all, in the referendum levies category, the increase was about $36,500. As I mentioned in a previous item, this is the second year of the first tier of the new levy. So 2018 Pay 19 was the first year of the new levy. 19 Pay 20 is the second year of the new levy, and then 20 Pay 21, revenue in fiscal year 2022, will be the third year of the first tier before we go into the second tier. Going down to the capital projects referendum, the increase there is about $22,000. That's, again, referred to as our tech levy. That amount is tied to the NTC, which is the net tax capacity of our taxing district. As the NTC changes, so does the capital projects referendum, and that NTC increased about 3.3%, thus the increase of about $22,000 year over year. Any other changes you see here are minor, and basically, prior year adjustments based on actual enrollment and other variables. Dr. Weiland touched on this a little bit, but the community education fund, so you can see that the total increase here is about $13,000, just under $13,000. Overall, made up by minor changes adding up to that number year over year. The debt service fund, so again, the debt service fund is principal and interest, 105, we're required to levy for 105% of our voter-approved principal and interest payments for the coming year. And you can see the actual decrease there is about a negative .48% or negative .5% going down about $22,500, again, just reflecting the fiscal year 2021 principal and interest payments on the voter-approved debt and the debt service levy. And then finally, the OPEB debt service, principal and interest on the other post-employment benefit obligations. The decrease here is about 1.35%, again, reflecting just the next year's payments on that debt. A visual representation of the general fund, community service, debt service, and OPEB debt service. The blue is the 19 Pay 20, the gold, let's call that, 18 Pay 19. You can see that far away, the largest fund is the general fund, and no major changes in any of the funds, just a little increase in the general fund. And then on the top right, as I mentioned, the overall increase about $120,000 year over year, from $14.7 million to $14.8 million. Looking next at the second part of the requirements, the budget, and I should mention, the requirement here is to show the most recent school board-approved budget, which in this case is our preliminary budget for the 19-20 years. So that's what you see in front of you here. So if you're trying to tie back and forth between this budget and the previous agenda item, that obviously includes our revised budget. Here includes the preliminary budget, so just a word of caution there. We're adding the food service fund here, which was not included on our levy because there is not a levy portion, as you see here, of the food service fund. And you can see, obviously, the general fund, far and away at $41.2 and $3 million, about 83% of the total of $50 million. The next two slides look at both the revenue by fund and the expenditures by fund, just a visual of each. As I mentioned, the general fund makes up about 82% of our total. Food service fund, about 3%. As Dr. Weiland mentioned, 5% attributed to the community education fund, 10% to our voter-approved debt service, and then 1% to the OPEB debt fund. The expenditure side, you would expect to follow closely, and it does, about 83% in the general fund, and the others follow very closely with the revenue pie chart as Expenditures by program area. So I mentioned this previously, but if you take the regular instruction, the vocational instruction, and the special education instruction, that adds up to about $28.5 million of a $41.2 million general fund budget. That's where the bulk of our dollars are going. Instructional support services, that's things like counselors, guidance, other student-centered expenditures, and then the pupil support services, the bulk of that $3.43 million has to do with our transportation contract with Minnesota Central. Just a visual on the previous slide, the general fund uses by program. As I mentioned, regular instruction at 49%, vocational at 2%, special education instruction at 18%. You add those up, that's almost 70% of our total. And then finally, just a few slides on the main variables that cause property tax increases and decreases, and I've summarized them in four main areas. The first change is in market values, things like your market value change from adding a deck on your house or putting a pool in your backyard. Changes in class rates, history, things like residential versus agricultural land. Voter-approved referendums, as we saw in the 2018 referendum, nothing last month in 2019. And then finally, state adjustments. Referendum market value history. So over the 15-year period, so you can see that RMV increased year over year 6.74%. So the increase from $2,265 million to $2,418 million is the value of all properties in our taxing districts. That's the definition of the referendum market value. And as I mentioned, a 6.7% increase. You can see that from 2009 through 2012, the negative changes in the... You can see that from 2009 through 2012, the negative changes in the RMV in our taxing district reflecting the housing bubble of that time period. And then, finally, just looking at the portion of taxes. So, the way that we look at this graph is the spread levy from 14.714 million to 14.834 million. So, that's the levy increase year-over-year of 120,000. And then, the 6.74% change in assessed valuation. So, if you look down, for example, under a $350,000 estimated market value, that would have gone up 6.74% on average. So, that 350 would have gone up to $373,590. And the portion of taxes would have gone from $2,058 down to $1,982. So, actually, a decrease of about $76 year-over-year because the property value growth exceeded the increase in the overall levy, resulting in a decrease for most properties. That is to say, the 6.4% increase in RMV went up by more than 120,000 year-over-year. And then, finally, that's the end. As I mentioned at the beginning, the recommendation tonight would be to approve the 2019 payable 2020 final levy of $14,834,065.51.
Questions, comments from board members? You've done such a good job informing us continually that we're out of questions.
Yeah.
All right, so we need a motion to approve the levy be collected at $14,834,065.51. Do I have a motion?
Move or people? Second.
We all move.
We all moved. Moved by Judy, seconded by Kevin. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the 2019-2020 North Suburban Summer Academy Joint Powers Agreement.
Yes, so, I'll start with just some background on what the North Suburban Summer Academy is. It began as a cooperative program back in 1997, and I think we were one of the early hosts of the program. Since 2001, it has been in Columbia Heights. And it is a program that is meant to serve, it's meant, it's a rigorous summer educational program for district-identified students, is how it's defined. And we do have, when we first, in the early years, we had quite a few students participating, over 100 students. This past year, we had 44. And in part, I believe, as I understand it, we have decreased in our participation in part because, over time, because of the location. It being over in Columbia Heights is difficult for us to get students there. So, I mention all of that because we, so this joint powers agreement is just for a year. And in part, it's just for a year because the academy is looking at expanding, so there'll be a site over here on the east side of town. And so, typically, when we bring a joint powers agreement to you, it would be for multiple years. But, again, in part, it's just a year because we anticipate there'll be some changes the following year. They are still looking for a new site, and they don't have a date for sure, but they're hopeful, and so, we're starting with the year. The main changes for this joint powers agreement, which, again, we've had for quite some time, really has to do with clarifying the role of the board and the role of the districts in terms of liability for equipment and such. And so, it's truly just for some clarification on some of the language, and to start to rewrite that joint power. And so, we would like to continue to participate, and in order to do that, we need approval of this joint powers agreement as it is for this year.
Questions? So, they're looking at a second site. They keep Columbia Heights, and there would be a second site on this side of town.
That's the hope, yes.
Okay.
That's what we're looking at.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
Moved by Stacy, seconded by Mike. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Oh, Kevin? Yeah?
You know, my children participated in this back in the early years of this happening. And I remember it was, you know, as a parent, and your kids get chosen to do this, it kind of feels pretty cool. But the driving was, I remember, the driving was a little daunting. I think one of the years, it was at, in Moundsview, maybe two years it was in Moundsview, and I can't remember where, but it seemed like, although I think, didn't we have it in Montomedi? I think.
I looked it up, and it was Moundsview for a couple of years, and then Montomedi, and then since then, it's been.
Yeah, because I think the one time, like, our daughter was able to do it here. So, I think it's a great program. I think it would be nice to have a site closer to home.
We've struggled with the transportation. We've had buses bus our students each year.
That's the last few years. The last few years. So, I probably see those numbers. So, all right, we have a motion.
And a second on the floor. Any other comments, discussion? All those in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, next we have our school board committee report, starting with AMSD.
I wasn't there. Did you go on?
I was there. So, we did have a visit from Senators Paul Anderson and Greg Clausen, and who talked a little bit about the legislative session. But I will say, I'll put in a plug for February 7th, which is really the legislative session preview. And so, that one, I think, would be worth attending.
Attend that one to get a little bit more insight.
That's the one where all the legislators and.
It'll be Chuck Uyghur, well, the panel will be Chuck Uyghur, Carla Nelson, Sandra Erickson, and Cheryl Yewakim will be there. Those will be the four that are the panelists, but typically, quite a few more legislators will be there. So, I recommend coming to that one if you are available on February 7th.
What's still at that one?
We are meeting at Quora, is where we've been meeting. But I'll double-check on that one, because it's a bigger one. It's possible it would be changed, but we've been at Quora recently. Mm-hmm. Oh, and if I could, I'll also highlight that for AMSD, our Zephyr Wellness was highlighted in the AMSD Connections publication in December. So, Zephyr Wellness program was highlighted there, and it was a great write-up, so.
All right. MAF. MAF did not have a meeting this month. They had social. But Kevin, if there's something you would like to report?
Well.
Of course, there is.
It is the, we're winding down on the Fall Fund Drive, and there's still time to get in, if one feels so moved. And then, we're really starting to ramp up for Legacy Night 2020, April 4th. So, some fun things happening.
MSBA, we have a delegate assembly. Julie and Kevin attended, if either of you want to speak to that.
Joe? We can both go. Go ahead, Kevin.
It was, I took a year off from going, and I will say that it is a lot more fun to be on the low part of the room than up on the dais, having to run that meeting. And I thought that Kathy and Deb did a fantastic job, some good resolutions, not all easy to vote on. I mean, there's, you know, but, and again, I think the thing that people sometimes don't recognize is that this is just intended to set, it's the only local unit of government where they use delegates to set policy and priorities that then go to the people that represent us at the state capitol. So, it's not passing legislation. We're not qualified for that, I guess. And, but it's just trying to help set some direction. So, there are still areas that will move forward, some things that won't probably go anywhere at all. And, but overall, I thought it was a pretty good delegate assembly, except when we got to that one where they amended, and amended the amendment, and then someone had to call the question. So, we had to have a 2/3 majority vote to call the question. And I was just like, oh, I had flashback from when I was there a couple of years ago. I'm like, oh, God, this is tough. So, but it was a good, I mean, it was a good session.
You always get a great feel for what's going on in the whole state, and the conversation's always robust. And, again, it's just always this, it's always a misunderstanding that we're not making legislation. So, but it was a really good event.
I want to say that what's pushed out to the public are snippets of the resolution, but staff at MSBA spend a lot of time researching every item, and Julie and Kevin have very thick binders full of additional information around all of those, because Barb did share with us how each resolution was voted upon, that Julia had shared with her. So, if you want more information on any of those resolutions, there is additional documentation from staff at MSBA that explains the position more fully for each of those items.
And I will say, Lucy, we missed your presence, and more importantly, no, I'm kidding, your chocolate.
Oh. I was in Florida with the choir, so, a little more fun, actually.
And I also took a lot of notes about where the discussions went, because some of them go places that you just don't even see or think about.
Yeah.
So, it's a great, great event.
So, the MSBA item coming up is the January meeting, which we talked about at organizational meeting tonight, that many of us will attend and have professional development at that time. So, 916 Board, Kevin?
So, there were five of us from the 916 Board at the delegate assembly. So, those five of us wear two hats, of course, because we represent our whole district, but then we also represent 916. And so, there was a resolution out there. They called for a couple of school districts, St. Paul, Minneapolis, were the ones that had put this forward with this idea that they should get services at a less expensive rate than member districts. So, one would ask, why would one want to be a member district, right? And so, I think there was some mistakes made there between St. Paul, Minneapolis, and their GA folks. And at the meeting, so, their piece was that districts should be able to levy for these fees, and member districts are not able to do that. We take it out of General Fund. And so, Minneapolis Schools actually amended that resolution to say, at least member districts ought to be able to levy for that, as well as Minneapolis and St. Paul. Number of, and it's not a large number, it's like 15 or so students open enroll into member districts and then go to 916. So, it's not a huge number, but I think just the concern is where the precedent is going on that. And, so that's the 916 part of the delegate assembly. We have, I was trying to come up with that date in January. I want to say it's the 21st or 22nd, but I can't be sure, for the evening workshop over at Quora on equity.
I believe it's, if I'm not mistaken, it's, isn't it the 25th?
25th, okay.
Or the 22nd, maybe. But there it is, 22nd.
22nd, okay. So, I asked, because we need to get that out to board members and superintendents that this is happening, and there are 14 member districts with school boards and superintendents, and it should be a great program, hour and a half long over at the Quora, it's like 6:30 to 8:00 or something of that nature, so.
16, I think Laura sent it out.
Okay. And so, does everybody, do they have a chance to see it and sign up if they wanted to?
Okay. I'm mistaken, was this, is this, was this full last year, and this is a new one?
This is a brand-new event.
This is a new one?
Yeah.
Okay, because there was one that was full?
There was the one, that summer event, it was an ed camp, and it was put on at Hamlin. So, that's a.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking of. Okay.
They have some, 916 is doing some excellent work in equity. And so, somebody had this idea about saying, hey, 916, why don't you do some work in this area to support the 14 member districts? I don't know who that guy was, but, anyway, it'd be, I think it's going to be a nice event. I know the person, the people that are doing it are really top drawer, so. Along the Quora piece, we had some discussion as the board, that Quora has become quite the place for AMSD and other things. And one of the problems that they're having is, because of the popularity of guests coming in to use the facility, that staff have to actually use this parking lot that's quite a ways away, and that the roads, the sidewalks and what have you, to get the staff to the schools are dangerous at best. And they've been working with the city to try to get something going as far as snowplowing and salt application, what have you. And so, really work on that, because they're just very concerned, that people have taken falls, and they're just concerned that that's just going to continue and not go anywhere good. Worked on some board policies, our meeting dates were set. I'll have Laura send this whole thing out to all of you. Oh, there's one other thing. There's a program visit, member school districts can go and tour the 916 Career Technical, can't listen to my voice here, Center on January 9th from 8:30 to 10:00. And just after our SVP, again, probably Laura could get you into that. Does she do that? Okay. That's what I have for 916?
You know how it goes now. You understand, Mike.
I do.
Laura knows exactly what needs to happen before you even.
Before I even know it, yes.
I'm accustomed to it.
Thank you, Kevin. Are there other school board subcommittee reports or other items we need to discuss? Superintendent's report.
Thanks. I want to recognize Jean Oswald and Beth Erlenborn for another awesome hour of code. Julie and I went, I don't know if anyone else was able to attend, but we had an opportunity to go and see our students doing some amazing things with technology. And we learned, we had a student we met in the hallway who explained a lot to us about programming and how he often gets to do this during his win time, because it is what he needs. And so, and win time is for what I need, and so, I, this is what I need. So, he was fabulous, and he taught us a few things. So, I know it takes a lot of extra time to put that together, but it's just a fabulous showcase of the students. The students work, and then it's fun to watch the kids teach the adults a thing or two. I want to thank Alice and Els Swayford and Tony Pierce for putting together our high school wellness conversations with our students. I know they also have, I know they also have some teachers who are helping them with this as well. So, now I'm looking at Alice, I think Terry Troutman, Dan, Ms., oh, Kale Bacon, it was in, Dan Kazar was in, okay. So, they all were helpful with this as well, gathering students together to give feedback on what they thought. Here's the driving question, how can Montomedi High School create and support an environment that ensures the social and emotional well-being of students? And so, this is part of the Zephyr Wellness program, our initiative, that has been supported by MAF. And this was, this is an opportunity to get student input on what it is that we should be doing to support them in their, in mental, social, emotional well-being of students. And so, they had their first conversation last week, and a second conversation this morning. I think the first conversation had eight students, and this one had 40, if I'm not mistaken. They, and one of the things I like about this is that the eight students told them how they could advertise better, because their first advertisement was a little too professional, and it didn't really speak to them. And if they could just change offer smoothies and just tell people to come, it'll work. And apparently, it did. The students knew how to get other students there. So, the conversations are being held, are being hosted by the students. The students are facilitating the groups to get information from their peers about what they're looking for. And so, and they will continue. for, and so, and they will continue these conversations Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, during flex time next week, so I'm excited to hear what comes of that, and we are committed to using that information to drive some programming, so thanks for that. I want to highlight a little bit, in here, we've got our Zephyr Wind Turbine, there's a little article, so I'm just going to mention it here, what is this, the White Bear Lake Community, our magazine, I guess it's just the magazine, yeah, so White Bear Lake Magazine, there's information about our Zephyr Wind Turbine, and some things, I appreciate some of the things that are highlighted in here about the partnerships that we have, and the work that the high school students did with the community to get that up and running, and so it really speaks to our direction in terms of our strategic direction and community partnerships and community impact, and so I'm just going to point that out, that you might want to take that...
Is it current issue?
Mm-hmm. I keep flipping back and forth.
It's also online, too, so if you go there, you can find it.
Yeah, sorry, I am not wearing my reading glasses, there it is, November here, if I hold it way out here, November, December, yeah, 2019. And then lastly, I want to thank all the students from the AP Language Arts classes who have been sending me letters, or sending the school board letters explaining what it is they'd like to see changed. I will say, it gives us an opportunity to hear what it is, what's on their minds, but also, we have improved the girls' and boys' bathrooms at the high school as a result of the things that have been requested, so they were heard, and they will see some changes in the boys' and girls' bathrooms as a result. So thank you to all of you who have written this, we're still getting back to a few, they keep coming, but we're thankful that students are willing to share their opinions and their voices to help make improvements, so, and I think that's all I have, thank you.
Right. Kevin?
As long as we're bragging about our schools and our students and staff and what have you, I want to just call out the TEDx Montomedi videos are now available to watch, and we had the Modeling a Protein Story, young ladies come and present, and they were absolutely amazing, and I am a little biased, but they were truly absolutely amazing, and so you can go to TEDx Montomedi and watch the streaming videos, they're on YouTube. But one of the other people that presented was this Vasov Sinie, who was a polymer, PhD polymer scientist at 3M, and he was so, because these groups, the people that spoke would come and rehearse, and so he saw the MAPS students speak, and so he invited his direct supervisor to come and listen to what they had to say, with the idea that these young ladies could possibly get offered a paid internship in the summertime because of the work that they've been doing in life sciences, so pretty cool, and the video is like eight or nine minutes long, and it's worth a watch, so.
All right, seeing no more business on the agenda, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Second. Thank you, moved by Julie, seconded by Stacy, we're adjourned.